This lots of gabbling, I call this meeting regularly scheduled Dunwoody City Council Meeting to order at six o'clock, we're on time, on January tenth. And with that, I will call up Judge Heidrick to administer the oath of office to council people Catherine Laudenbacher, Rob Price, and Tom Lambert. If y'all will join, well, Tom will join from down there, and if Catherine. Thank you. And Judge Heidrick will first administer the oath for city council and then the oath for the public facilities authority. Thank you. And as we're shifting seats, I want to give council now former councilmen, Ari Baskin, a chance to say a word or two.
Since I was not elected and appointed, I don't have to concede, but actually, I could actually give up and pass on. So I thank the mayor for giving me the opportunity to be able to serve. I think the council for being very nice to me and, and, and this wonderful camaraderie and feeling that we have in the city of Dunwoody. It's really refreshing. And I gladly pass on my, my seat and my duties to Catherine. And I'm sure she'll do a great job.
Thank you, Ari. Councilman Henigan. Oh, yes, Councilman Henigan.
Please rise. At this meeting, help us to make decisions which keep us faithful to our mission and reflect our values, give us strength to hold to our purpose, wisdom to guide us, and a keen perception to lead us, and above all, keep us charitable as we deliberate. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chief, are you gonna provide an introduction? Thank you.
Mayor and council, it's my pleasure tonight to introduce two of our newest officers, if they would come forward and stand right here beside me. That'd be great. The first is Officer Darian Brewer. We're excited to have him on our team. Darren was most recently employed at Children's Healthcare of Atlanta, where he worked as a security officer. And prior to that, he worked as a deputy sheriff, jailer for Gwinnett County Sheriff's Office, and held other positions in the private security field. We're excited that he's on our team, and he joined our department on November the thirtieth. Next to Darian is Kyle Lubenhuesen. Kyle's been employed at Ride Tech as a shop technician since 2018, and prior to that, he worked in the maintenance, food service, and retail industry. He's from Indiana, and Kyle actually has a brother with the Atlanta Police Department. So we're excited to welcome him on our team as well.
Thank you. So I'll go back up in a second, but to Kyle and Darian, thank you so much for joining our police department. We're so grateful for your service, the service of all your fellow associates behind you. And our community is incredibly grateful. Yesterday was National Law Enforcement Officers' Day, and we are grateful for the service that you and your colleagues provide. We think we're a wonderful place, the best community to serve as a law enforcement officer. And so, welcome, and thank you for choosing Dunwoody. Okay. All right, public comments. I have a few cards. Each public comment person or speaker gets three minutes. Please state your name. I'm gonna give us one second to let the crowd clear out and for me to catch my breath. Thank you. One second. Okay. We're getting there. If everyone could leave the for your area that's speaking. Susan? She didn't hear me. Okay, I think that's good. All right. Joni Dwoskin. Thank you. Joni, if you could make sure you're speaking into the microphone and that it's on, please. I might have turned it off. Is the green button on, green light?
Now it is.
Yes, thank you, sorry.
Okay. Hello. I'm Joni Dwoskin. I live at fifty-seven eleven Ben Creek Road. I know that this public comment session is not a two-way conversation, but I'm at a loss about how to have a two-way conversation with my city council. Your lawyer told me that the city told her to stop communicating with me, and Councilwoman Harris has told me that the city attorney told the city council not to talk to me. So where does this leave me and other residents who've suffered from the damage the city has caused to the Mill Glen Pond? As a quick reminder, I'm here on behalf of the homeowners that surround the pond in the Mill Glen subdivision that's been damaged by the city's failed stormwater management system. The city has made repeated attempts to repair and restore the eroded stream bank that's dumped sediment into our pond over the years, but has done nothing to repair the damage to the pond or to prevent ongoing and future damage to the pond. When I asked the city's project manager to take precautions to avoid causing additional damage when you started the last restoration project in May of 2020, it seemed as if that was gonna happen. But with every rain, we had more dirt deposited into the pond throughout the entire construction project and beyond. Every time it rains, more sediment dumps into the pond. The city's latest attempt to stop the erosion of the stream that feeds into our pond includes the installation of large rocks in the pond upstream, in the, in the upstream creek. The water is flowing so quickly through that stream that the rocks are just rolling downstream and will eventually end up in the pond on par, on top of the big pile of sediment. The system is broken. So I have a few questions for you. Number one, why did you instruct your attorney to stop talking with us about the extent of the city's responsibility for the pond? Number two, by telling your attorney to stop communicating with us, are you saying that the only way to get the city to talk to us is for the citizens of Dunwoody to sue the city? If we do sue you, will you talk to us then? Number three, do you really believe that after repeated failed attempts to stop the massive erosion upstream from the pond, that the city has no responsibility for the fact that our pond is choked by sediment? Number four, where do you think the dirt that used to be in my neighbors' yards upstream from the pond is today? Do you think it might have landed in the pond? If yes, then how can you say that the city has zero responsibility for the damage you've done to our private property? How can you refuse to talk to us? Number five, when you hired contractors in 2010 and 2020 to repair the failed piping and eroded stream bank upstream, did you consider the fact that the stream is connected directly to the pond? Why did you decide to try to fix only part of the broken stormwater management system? Number six, why do our upstream neighbors get the benefit of the city's attempts to repair the damage your failed stormwater management system caused to their property, but the owners of the pond don't get that same benefit? Is there something about the upstream properties that's different from the downstream properties that entitles those property owners to have the city ensure their property values are not decimated by the city's faulty system? How can the pond owners receive the same level of attention and service from our public officials that you've given to our upstream neighbors? Please consider these questions and let me know how I can get them answered. If you continue to refuse to engage with us about the extent of the city's responsibility for the harm to our pond, I'd appreciate something.
Thank you, Ms. Dwoskins. Next is Owen Dwoskin.
Hello, council.
Hello, you'll have three minutes. Go ahead.
Yeah, it won't take you that long. I'm Owen Dwoskin. I'm also live at five-seven-eleven Ben Creek Road, and I will just continue where Joni left off. Pond owners feel ignored, mistreated, and confused about how we are supposed to engage with you. The stonewalling is not consistent with your city mission statement. I'll read it to you now to remind you of what you have committed to do as members of this elected body. The mission of the city of Dunwoody is to provide the highest quality of life to, for those who work or play in our community, and to foster an environment where business can prosper. We will serve all stakeholders in a transparent manner with resourceful, efficient, progressive, and professional leadership. I will leave you with one final question for the season. Do you believe that refusing to talk with city residents about the harm they have suffered due to the city's actions is consistent with this mission statement? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. McKenna Reese. And just make sure the green light's on, and you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is McKenna Reese, and I'm here to speak with you in favor of softball fields at the Austin Park. I have played softball at Dunwoody High School since eighth grade, but my softball career started long before that. I played at Sandy Springs as soon as I moved to Dunwoody in fourth grade, but I've been playing homerun derby and other fun games in my front yard since I could walk pretty much. Our Dunwoody softball field, in case you've never seen it, has an uneven outfield. Your right field is probably this big compared to your left field, which is this big. We have no lights, and we have one father who has maintained our field for us ever since I've been at Dunwoody. In fact, it was the first thing that I noticed when I moved to Dunwoody. I would walk to the village with my friends, and I saw the senior baseball field, which has now been replaced with the Austin, and I realized that there was no softball field there. In fact, there is not a softball field in a publicly owned park in the city of Dunwoody. Their only option for softball players include Murphy-Canler Park and Sandy Springs, which can be reserved. However, those reservations on weeknights and weekends are completely full. We have no opportunity to go out and practice on a softball field by ourselves, with a trainer, or with our teammates. Outside of Murphy-Canler, there are very limited options at private schools or organizations, but they have to be booked with a team, meaning I cannot go out and practice at a public softball field on my own. In fact, I had ankle reconstruction surgery, and I had nowhere to go practice softball before my season started for junior year. When the baseball fields were added at Brook Run Park in 2017, my freshman year, I had hoped that the city of Dunwoody would provide us with an option for softball, the easiest one being a portable baseball mound on the field where the softball players would simply pick it up, move it, practice, and then put it back. The softball players were willing to put in the work to just have a functioning field that we can all practice on. However, the city of Dunwoody in fact denied this request and left it as only a baseball field for the senior baseball team. Either way, even if we had gotten the mound, the baseball team would have had priority over the softball team, including at Murphy-Canler Park, where there are fields for kids my age and high school players. The football team has priority over those fields as well, leaving us with no options. Overall, the softball community, including the players, the parents, the supporters, the former players, and the upcoming generation of players, have been left out of the plans from city of Dunwoody. In fact, many members of our community do not view a field as any, with any importance to the future generations. Many comments that were left include, "Do not like the idea of softball fields. It is a waste of community space. Why do we even need one ball field? What a waste of space. How would you like to be told that your hobby, that your sport, something that you could potentially have a future in, is a waste of space and not even important? Please, please consider adding the softball field at the Austin Elementary Field." Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Bob Dallas.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Bob Dallas, and first council member Laudenbacher and Price, congratulations. You're gonna be in the ride of your life, I'm sure, for the next many years. We're gonna benefit from that, I'm sure. I just wanna thank each of you and the mayors that I've been able to serve as a planning commissioner for. That's all four mayors and all the city councils since, which include Ken Wright, Mike Davis, Danny Shorter, and of course, Mayor George. It's really truly been an honor to serve as a planning commissioner during this time. And I just cannot thank the people that I had the opportunity to work with. First and foremost, the many planning commissioners who served on this dais over these many years that worked so hard together to help guide Dunwoody's development. I also want to thank staff over the many years to today with Richard. We've had a great staff and really great thoughtful people giving us insight as to how development can occur here in Dunwoody. And most of all, I really want to thank the people who came before all of us as planning commissioners. To me, that was probably the most rewarding part, is listening to what people thought about how land use and zoning should occur in Dunwoody, their heartfelt concerns about how they want to see their future and their kids' future here in our city. And, you know, as chair, one of the things I always focused on was making sure that nobody left these doors without having had the opportunity to not only be heard, to be understood. And I understand sometimes I'm meeting my ass a little bit longer than they should, but I always felt that was much more important than, you know, getting a meeting done quickly. As I mentioned at the last planning commission meeting I attended, there were two things of what I call unfinished business, which I hope not only the planning commissioners, but the city council will consider. And you've heard me talk about these before, but I want to mention them because I think they're really important, and I hope many other people look into this. First is inclusionary zoning. I believe it's very important that our city take the steps to start considering what inclusionary zoning should look like in the city of Dunwoody. It's a process. Every city will differ, but I think it's really important that we do that. Secondly, and this has to do with the perimeter area, I believe we should implement service districts and impact fees primarily focused on apartments in order to build the amenities that the perimeter market needs. I mean, we are growing perimeter like crazy. I mean, we've read recently about some great companies moving to perimeter. A lot of people, people obviously live in perimeter now, so the amenities need to be part of that growth, because it's not fair to people who we call our guests, the business people, the, the, the people who stay at the hotel, the restaurants, if we don't have that full cachet of amenities. So the question is, how do we pay for them? I think this is a long-term, sustainable way to bring us those amenities that keep perimeter area in the premier of the market, not just for the metro Atlanta area, but for the southeast United States. So with that, I want to thank all of you, because you've all been great to work with and to talk to about what we think Dunwoody should look like in the future. And I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for being given the opportunity to work with so many wonderful people. Thank you.
And thank you, Bob. Just a moment of privilege for your twelve-plus-year service on the planning commission. You jumped right in, feet first, when we were a new city, and you continued to serve for a really long time, and we are grateful for your service. We appreciate it. Thank you. Joe Hirsch.
Hello. As you all know, here on council, that a, a lot of staff, residents, commissions, and other people spend a lot of time writing our codes and ordinances and charter, and hopefully, they're not arbitrary, because most items have been debated ad nauseam, and y'all put in a lot of thought to most of the things. So for example, if the city has written in the code that perhaps the height of a residential fence should not exceed eight feet, I would hope that the city would not just say, "Sometimes it can be twelve, it doesn't matter." Or if, or if the city says there's a no truck zone on this street, that, that that's not enforced on just Mondays and Tuesdays, that it's equally properly enforced. Or perhaps, if Dunwoody has a sexual harassment policy, one would hope that if a police officer solicited nude photos from subordinates, that it would not be okay, and that his actions would not be ignored. I, I bring up and ask these rhetorical questions because our city's charter is very clear on when our newly elected officials should be sworn in. Article two, section two oh nine, says the city shall meet on the first working day in January for swearing in. That was January third. January third, City Hall was open. So a reminder of the oath that we just heard a minute ago, and those of y'all already heard, was, "I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully and to the best of my ability support and defend the charter ordinances and the regulations of Dunwoody." So what, what happened? Mayor, or perhaps our city manager, Eric Clinton, where your oath, where you faithfully execute to the best of my ability? Why no meeting on January third? You know, why do we have these meetings? Why do you write codes and, or charter if the city does not abide by them? Why waste everyone's time if certain things can just be ignored and looked the other way for city or not for certain people and enforced for some and unequal? It's not proper. Today is a perfect example of why government, particularly Dunwoody, is not trusted, and there's questionable faith in your actions. We started off on a wrong foot. I congratulate Rob and Catherine on your new positions, but I presume you'll do better than those who have failed you on what should have been your first days in office. And I hope, unlike those before you, our newly elected officials will hold our own city's employees accountable for their transgressions, because right now, we just get excuses as the city turns a blind eye to its own failings. Everything in the city is not okay, but things can improve if our leaders are held accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. There will be another public comment session at the end of the meeting. And Councilman Lambert, do you want to introduce the next item, and then Sharon can read the proclamation? Do you want to say a few words, or just tell? Do you want to say a few words or just tell? I think you could introduce it. Sorry, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Oh, no, that's fine. That's fine.
Could invite um,
Kristi and Laura.
Kristi and Laura up to the podium maybe or up just, you don't have to stay in the foyer, for lack of a better term. And you want to say a few words, Tom, about how we got to where we are today?
Yes, thank you. Um, yeah, so this next proclamation is about a very important topic and it has to do with human trafficking. And uh, Kristi and Laura both represent the Safe House Project, which is a group that works to combat, I'm going to switch masks here, I can't talk in that one. Let's leave it off. Uh, that to combat trafficking and also provide services to help identify victims of this and, and provide services for victims afterwards in uh, and they also have training, and training is an important part of this. This has been an important thing for the city of Dunwoody. From a prosecution and enforcement effort, our police department and our courts have fought this. We've actually recently changed ordinances to crack down on some potential loopholes and make it prosecution easier for, for ending these, these crimes. Uh, but an important part of that is also education and learning to recognize the signs of who are, who are the victims of these crimes and so that we could provide services and help to those that are the victims and hopefully prevent people from becoming victims in the first place. So uh, today we're, I'm very proud of the city for taking this step and issuing this proclamation. Uh, we'll be just the second city in the, in the country to earn the title of a city of freedom from the Safe House Project. And with that, I'll, I'll, I'll have the proclamation read. Thank you.
Okay, Sharon, we're having some technical struggles today, so let's see. Are you ready?
I am ready. Mayor, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Proclamation, city of freedom.
One second, Sharon, I'm going to step back on.
Okay. Proclamation, city of freedom. Whereas human trafficking is a form of modern-day slavery, where more than half of the active cases in the United States are sex trafficking cases involving children. And whereas hundreds of thousands of American children are the victims of trafficking every year in the United States and survivor identification is only at 1%. And whereas child sex trafficking can have psychological, emotional, and physical effects that can have lifelong consequences for victims of trafficking. And whereas even through, even though awareness of this crime is growing, human trafficking continues to go unreported due to its isolating nature, the misunderstanding of its definition, and the lack of awareness about its indicators. And whereas providing individuals with training on how to spot, report, and prevent trafficking will equip people with the education they need to report suspected trafficking or prevent vulnerable individuals from being trafficked in our community. And whereas increased community education on how to identify victims of human trafficking, along with increased knowledge of local resources and services for those affected by these criminal actions, can help restore freedom and dignity to identified survivors, as well as help to ma- diminish the number of future victims. And whereas Safe House Project educates to increase victim identification through online services, such as their OnWatch training program and provides response services as victims become survivors through residential Safe House programs, emergency services, and economic empowerment. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Lynn Deutsch, Mayor of the city of Dunwoody, do hereby recognize the efficacy of education as a human trafficking prevention tool and call upon the citizens and employees of Dunwoody to recognize our vital role in ending all forms of human trafficking and encouraging everyone to educate themselves through training. This proclamation, along with the strengthening of local ordinances and enforcement efforts, affirms Dunwoody's commitment to creating a community where everyone has value, dignity, and worth, and to express commitment to come alongside those who are on the front lines of victim identification and the providers who empower survivors' path to freedom. If you see something that doesn't look right, take action and call the National Human Trafficking Hotline at 888-373-7888, or text HELP to 233-733.
Thank you. Give us one second to. Well, thank you all so much. Mayor Deutsch, thank you for taking this initiative seriously. Tom Lambert, thank you for really being a champion for this issue and for truly making sure that we could get Dunwoody to be the second city in the nation to be a city of freedom. Uh, tomorrow is National Human Trafficking Awareness Day. But I am so deeply grateful that you all have taken the initiative to move beyond awareness, truly to education, to impact communities, to spot, report, and prevent trafficking. As somebody who walks alongside survivors of trafficking every day, many of which are all across the nation, that many of which have been trafficked through this area, um, I can tell you that they are grateful. They are grateful because they know that eyes and ears of the communities are exactly what we need to really stand against this issue and to begin to see it eradicated. Eradication of trafficking is a, um, a big goal. But nothing short of that is worthy of our efforts. So I thank you for truly taking freedom seriously and for advocating for those who are still victims in order for them to, when they become survivors after being identified. So thank you all very much. We appreciate it and congratulations on becoming the second city of freedom.
Thank you, and thank you for your service. We appreciate it. And Councilman Lambert has something to add.
Yeah, I'd just like to add one other thing. The, the training program, the OnWatch training program that they offer, I've actually completed it and I, I just want to say, I, I strongly encourage everyone listening to take it. It's, it's, first of all, it's very well done. It's very eye-opening. I learned a lot. A lot of it was quite scary, actually. And uh, but the, the training, um, not only is it well done, but it's also very digestible. It's, uh, it's set up in a way that it's easy. There's small, uh, I think there was 10 segments, about five minutes each. So you could pop on for five minutes, watch a segment, it keeps track of where you are. Go back tomorrow, go back next week, go back next month, do another segment. So it's really an easy thing to complete and it's, it's certainly worthwhile, uh, thing to do. And if you're like me, you'll find it very eye-opening to, to learn that there's a lot of misconceptions about trafficking and what's happening out there and, and how important it is for us to recognize the signs of when it's happening so we can, we can get involved. So, so thank you, Kristi.
And it's free and it's at iamonwatch.org if anybody would like to take it.
Thank you so much. And we're going to share the, the services and the training on through our social media and website. So thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank, thank you, Councilman Lambert, for leading the way on this. Eric Litten, when you're ready.
Yes, Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we're going to do the, um, the city manager's month of report. If you'll pull that document up at your leisure. The, uh, the police, the department's crime response team with additional officers conducted a joint distracted driving detail on Millwood Schallerford and Cotillion, along with the Shamley Police Department and the Governor's Office of Highway Safety. A total of 49 citations were issued, which includes 42 hands-free violation citations. So um, so that, that law is well enforced here in Dunwoody. And we want to help eliminate distracted driving. Also, the officers delivered presents to children along the Peachtree Industrial Boulevard corridor, uh, corridor on Christmas Day. And uh, those were some gifts that we had from the, from the drive. The um, also, once again, I always enjoy talking about the license plate readers. And if you'll notice throughout the police portion of the report, I talked about the license plate readers numerous times, recovering stolen autos um, and other crimes that have been committed elsewhere and how we can help bring those to a resolution here in Dunwoody. Uh, Public Works, Spalding at Shamley-Dunwoody intersection. Construction 57 continues to install the concrete curb and sidewalk on the west side of Spalding Drive. That project continues to move along. Also, the Georgetown Gateway Project in Shamley-Dunwoody. Atlanta Gaslight is working on service tie-ins to the new gas main and plans have been, uh, to, been completed to relocate, um, those lines all throughout January. Also, Winter's Chapel Trail Phase 1, the Atlanta Gaslight has installed 800 feet of new gas mains. It is expected to complete that work in February. So those projects, once again, are moving forward. Um, maintenance crews cleaned 16 stormwater structures and completed 12 stormwater work orders, two sidewalk repairs, 11 street repairs, and 12 sign repairs during the month of December, uh, within the department. Also parks, um, we have the Martin Luther King Junior Day of Service, January 17th, 2022. So it's coming up. Also, the parking lot lights will be installed at the former Austin site, what we're calling the Austin Park now, starting this month. All the bands have been scheduled for the Extended Grooving on the Green Concert Series that will run from June through October. That's already taking place in terms of the scheduling. And also, uh, maintenance staff has completed the leaf removal from perimeter center east and a long additional right-of-ways located throughout, throughout the city. Um, under community development, 445 building inspections were completed during the month of December. Um, the new Publix down the street has received its temporary certificate of occupancy. Now the opening later, it's opening. And also, part of that was a, was a bond to complete the work uh, along Asher-Dunwoody Road for the trail system. So that portion of the project has been bonded. Um, so they can go ahead and open the store. Also, the department removed about 200 illegal signs, um, from the right-of-way. The, um, economic development, uh, we have the new US headquarters for APIC Lloyd. Um, coming to Dunwoody, bringing 786 new jobs to Dunwoody and investing approximately $18 million in Ravinia 3. Um, so that's a great, uh, item for Dunwoody. Also, information technology, the migration to the cloud for the emails is now completed. We also have, um, we have the registration for our electronics recycling on March 27th. So uh, Jennifer and her department have been promoting that event. And also the household hazardous waste recycling on April the 30th. Those are upcoming events as well. Finances work with the police department on securing and distributing the first responders supplement grant for sworn police department employees. That's something that's upcoming as well. And then the monthly financial report is part of this city manager report. There's a link in your document that will take you to the financial report as well. The, um, and that concludes my report. I, along with the other staff members, are available to answer any questions the council may have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody have questions? John.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, I think it's more of a police question, but it's regarding the license plate readers.
Chief is here.
Yeah, I see, Chief. I also am a big fan of the license plate readers and I noticed there was a incident which happened with a motorcycle and uh, the officers decided not to pursue the suspect. Two questions. Chief, can you just give us an update on the pursue, uh, policies? Just to make sure that everybody knows what those are. And then if you could, uh, tell us, license plate readers, do they work for motorcycles?
Absolutely. Any, anything that has a tag on it. So for instance, a trailer, anything that can be entered into the motor vehicle, uh, database.
I just thought they might be small, so I wasn't sure if they work.
Yes, absolutely. Uh, as far as chase, uh, our policy is pretty restrictive. Like most, uh, metropolitan cities, uh, we have a, a chase policy that says forcible felony only. Uh, and so a stolen car is certainly not, doesn't fall under that category. You know, from, from my point of view, it's not worth the risk, uh, for property for an officer or someone else to get injured or killed over it. Uh, certainly there are times when we're going to chase them, no matter what, uh, for a serious crime, but not, but not for the minor crimes.
Thank you, Chief. I just thought it was an opportunity to raise that one's report. So thank you very much for clarifying.
Joe.
Um, Eric, yeah, thank you again for the report and I appreciate the structure of, especially knowing, um, the activity, upcoming activities and events publicly facing. That, that definitely helps. And of course, Public Works, everything they're doing is public-facing and it's ongoing in future. So that's great, uh, to hear that. Um, Chief, if you could just nod. Are you guys doing the polar plunge there, uh, in February still up in Gainesville? Great, awesome. Looking forward to that. Um, Eric, what's the best way of us finding out when we release RFPs to get, um, to see what those are? I see down below we got like a Mount Vernon Road quarter improvements. Where can we go? What's the best way? What do you recommend us to, to, to get CC?
Sure. And what we can do on that, I mean, we can certainly add those into the report for one thing. And number two, all that is on the website. John Gates does an excellent job on promoting any kind of RFPs. Well, you know, once they're posted, um, you know, once they've gone public, we put all that on the website. And that's one way that we get the majority of our responses is, is through our web and, um, but from that standpoint, we can certainly add the active ones. If y'all prefer, we can add that under the finance element. We can actually add a subcategory, uh, for purchasing because that's a, that's a very large portion of our finance department, as far as the responsibilities.
Yeah, that'd be great just to have the link in there in the PDF. Awesome. Thank you, Eric. Appreciate it.
Anybody? Tom.
Uh, yeah, I guess I'm making a three's a charm on the LPRs here because I know Eric and John have mentioned it. I just wanted to just highlight it and, uh, thank you, Chief, and your department for, for your efforts there. And just to emphasize what an important tool that is for enforcement. Uh, there were a lot of hits on this and, um, it's important, not only for capturing the stolen vehicle, but the thing that jumps out to me is how many of those LPR hits, when they pulled over the car for a stolen vehicle, there were guns, there were drugs, there were other things. And as Chief can tell us or any police officer can tell you, a lot of crime is committed in stolen vehicles. They steal the car to go do something so they can't get caught. So, um, it's not only a reactive tool to catch people that have stolen a car, it's also a preventative tool that can stop crime from happening in the first place. So, uh, thank you, Chief, and your department for all you're doing. And I just wanted to make people aware of, of that part of the LPR as well. Thanks.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Eric. And for those who haven't attended our meetings during COVID, we, we have respaced out. We were back to normal, but we've spread out more. And our staff is primarily reporting from upstairs in their offices. And so therefore, when I call on someone, I look up. Just know that I'm not looking to heaven. All right. So, thank you. So I think next it, next is a public hearing, Sharon.
Yes. Mayor, I will read the, you can provide the first read of the ordinance in ordinance to amend the zoning conditions of Land Lot 347, District 18 in consideration of zoning case RZ-21-02411 Ravinia Parkway to authorize a variance from the street frontage requirements.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The first case is, um, under consideration is 11 Ravinia Parkway. This is a rezoning case. Um, the applicant requests to modify the conditions of zoning. And they are also requesting a concurrent variance. The variance is to allow relief from the street frontage requirements on Ravinia Parkway. Just a quick note before I begin, concurrent variances are a new process for Dunwoody. You all recently approved a text amendment allowing them. Um, this is the first of its nature. Variants is utilize different approval criteria than the rezoning. So if you have any questions about the So if you have any questions about these criteria or my analysis, I'll be happy to address those later. So first, I'm going to give you a little bit of background on this property. I'm sure you've all noticed it. It is the empty lot at the corner of Ravinia and Ashford-Dunwoody, right across the street from Best Buy. It's also directly adjacent to two eighty-five. This property has undergone a series of rezonings. It is currently zoned PC dash two, but it was originally a part of the Ravinia development in nineteen eighty-two. This piece at that time was set aside for transportation and access to the property. And since then, over the course of the next three decades, it's subsequently been proposed for different uses. It was proposed at one point for a high-rise office development, and then it was proposed for a restaurant and retail development. And then, most recently, in twenty nineteen, it was slated for a one hundred and fifty-six key hotel, restaurants, and retail. And the site plan is on the right for reference. Currently, they are requesting to change the conditions to alter what they're proposing on this property. So they are proposing a one hundred and ten thousand square foot retail facility, specifically furniture retail. And they will have twenty-four surface parking spaces, along with a hundred and thirty-two subsurface parking spaces. Due to the steep sloping topography on the property, the building will be cantilevered over the parking lot, and very few spaces will be visible from the road. There will be no vehicular access from Ashford-Dunwoody. All access on Ravinia Parkway is taken from Ravinia Parkway. You can see, circled in blue on the screen is the main entrance, and that's how you enter the subsurface parking deck. The courtyard area is highlighted in green. The front entrance from the street is circled in purple. And then there are also two other entrances, circled in red and yellow. And these are connected by a driveway, so it creates a horseshoe drive. And then highlighted in purple is their loading dock area where they will drop off goods and also people can pick up furniture that they order there as well. Here, highlighted in red, is the length of frontage where the applicant is requesting this variance from the street frontage. Essentially, they're asking to not have to build the sidewalk in that area. Instead, they are proposing a crosswalk across Ravinia Parkway, and that will connect with the existing sidewalk infrastructure that's on the other side of the road. We feel that excuse me, these are the trees along Ravinia Parkway. I just wanted to give you a visual of that. Staff feels that these trees can and should be adequately protected during and after construction. That's been a great concern of ours, because these are very mature and large oak trees. So in the interest of preserving these trees, we do recommend some changes to the site plan. We feel that the additional curb cut, so the middle curb cut, that in the previous slide was circled in red, we feel that it needlessly endangers the health of several trees. And we don't feel that it's necessary for the success of this development. We'd recommend that this curb cut and this driveway be removed in an effort to preserve those trees. Additionally, as part of the rest, the applicant's rationalization for their variance, they do cite the preservation of these trees as a reason for that. Very recently, the applicant did provide a tree assessment, and that came in on Friday, so last Friday, late in the day. We haven't had, you know, adequate time to review these new changes, but I just wanted to make you aware of that. We're going to review this further. And, you know, as a result of this new information, our recommendation may change. You know, i.e. the conditions might be slightly altered. So I just wanted to make you all aware of that. Some additional information about the property here is a, on the left, a picture of some trees that the applicant is proposing to preserve, and that will be in the courtyard area. And you can see on the right-hand side is a rendering of that proposed courtyard area. This is how the building will be viewed from the street, just to give you an idea of the design concept. And here are some additional renderings. Overall, we're pleased with these, and we feel that it's in line with the goals of heightened, more urban design in the perimeter center. In regards to the requested variance, Public Works finds that the proposed crosswalk is an appropriate alternative to the street frontage requirements. Currently, if they were to build a sidewalk along that frontage, first of all, it wouldn't lead to anywhere in particular, because there's nothing down there. And then, second of all, the topography, and again, the presence of those large, mature trees greatly complicate the installation of a sidewalk and planting strip. The requirements of the code don't take into account these types of unique conditions and circumstances of individual properties. So that's why we have this variance process in place. In lieu of the required street frontage, staff recommends a twenty-foot easement to accommodate any future improvements. So if at some point the city does want to go in there and do some sort of connectivity project, they have the ability to do so. Overall, the proposed development is generally consistent with the approval criteria for rezoning and for variances. So we do recommend approval of both the modification of conditions and the concurrent variance subject to the conditions and exhibits provided. And again, noting that those conditions will likely alter before the second read. I'm available if y'all have any questions.
Okay, so this is a public hearing. And so Sharon, I'm having on-base problems myself, so I go into the for and against first, right? Sharon? Yes, okay, that's what I thought. Okay, so, and then the
Well, Mayor, I'm sorry.
The question is, is that I'm having on-base problems, so I can't open the actual agenda in the device. So do I, does the applicant make a presentation first, or do we do for and against first?
Yes, the applicant makes their presentation.
Makes sense, all right.
Hearings.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead. Yeah, I guess so. Yeah, I mean, I technically know, but it's fine, because we're short people.
No pun intended. Good evening, everybody. My name's Din Webb, eleven oh five West Peachtree Street, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three oh nine, here on behalf of the applicant. Before I begin, let me introduce a couple folks. First, in the rear here is Brian Saltikoff. Brian is a senior project manager with Living Spaces Furniture. For those who don't know, Living Spaces is a California-based modern furniture company. It's got twenty-nine locations, and it represents designers like Jonathan Andrew Scott and Joanna Chip Gaines. The fellow who's assisting me tonight is Derek Zitrower. He's with Kimberly Moore. Ask Kimberly Moore to send their tallest man to deliver tonight. Madeline did a good job of setting up the property and explaining where it is. I'm just going to mention a couple points. It's three point five, four or five acres in total. It's vacant, I think, as most of you know. And she touched on the zoning history. That zoning history goes back about forty years. I know the folks who are heavily involved in the VHA are well aware of that. The most recent iteration was for a company called Guyer Morris. And as you heard, they were asking for approval of a one hundred and fifty-six key hotel, about forty-two thousand square feet of retail, and a three-level parking deck. And that zoning was approved subject to a particular site plan, and that's why we're here, to modify those conditions to allow for a different site plan. Madeline touched on a little bit of what we want. It's a hundred and ten thousand square feet of retail and a single building, twenty-four surface parks, and a hundred and thirty-two subsurface parks. I passed out a set of elevations, just to kind of, so you guys could thumb through. It's not worth going through a page at a time, but it does a good job, I think, of representing the architectural style proposed and sort of the concept and feel of the building. But you'll notice it's a modern design, and importantly, it includes that courtyard on Ashford-Dunwoody Road. Inside the building itself, there is a showroom, a design center, and a cafe. And that cafe actually opens up into the courtyard that you see. And at the cafe, they'll sell stuff like coffee and espresso, sandwiches, salads, beer and wine, and whatnot. As Madeline mentioned, there are three curb cut access points, all on Ravinia Parkway, which is a private drive. And we're making a great effort to save existing trees at the corner. There are actually about twenty-eight of those oaks that were planted at some point during the construction of Ravinia along that stretch in total. So we're saving a band at the corner. I'm going to talk a little bit more about the trees in a minute. We're providing all the required streetscape on Ashford-Dunwoody. And as Madeline explained, we're providing about two hundred and fifty feet down Ravinia Parkway. And at that point, we're providing a crosswalk to go over to an existing set of streetscape improvements on the other side, which everyone's certainly, at the staff level, seems to think is a good idea. As Madeline mentioned, they're recommending a conditional approval on both of the applications. So I'm going to abbreviate what I'm going to talk about tonight, so I can get to your questions. But I got to talk about the big issue, and that's the curb cuts. I've handed out a three-page exhibit that has three items. Number one is the first site plan that we submitted. So this is where we started. The second page is the revised site plan. The third page is the tree impact plan that Madeline touched on a little bit. And just to walk you through the original's concept plan, you see the northernmost curb cut. As Madeline said, that's the primary entrance that leads you to a small parking area at street level and to a hundred and thirty-two spaces that are underground. And the middle curb cut and the south curb cut are designed for customer pickup and, more importantly, truck delivery. If you read the staff report, you'll note that they're interested in, like we are, in preserving trees. And they asked, as part of that consideration, to think about removing the middle curb cut. And we did take a hard look at that option, and we feel like it is critically important here for a couple reasons. This U-shaped area that you see defined by the boundary of the middle curb cut and the southernmost curb cut is for truck circulation. So the idea is that a truck, an eighteen-wheeler, will pull in that middle curb cut, pull down, angle back towards Ravinia Parkway, then back into the loading dock. And if this middle, or excuse me, this horseshoe configuration in there, the only option is for that eighteen-wheeler to stop in Ravinia Parkway and back onto the property, which we don't think is a good option. It's also, this horseshoe configuration is also designed to try and keep the, certainly, the vehicular customer away from the larger trucks as well. My understanding is that Living Spaces does about twenty-five percent online business. So some of those online customers will have their material shipped to them at their houses, but other folks come and pick it up. And so we want to keep those away from the trucks, too. What we did, though, was find what we think is a good alternative to try and save the trees another way. Again, if you compare the first page of this exhibit, which is where we start, you'll notice that in the middle of the horseshoe, there are thirteen parking spaces on the east side of that driveway that front Ravinia Parkway. And if you turn the page, you'll see that we took those parking spaces out. That creates about a twenty-three to twenty-four foot pervious area that we think is adequate, certainly, to make a great attempt at preserving those trees. We think it's a reasonable alternative, and we also think it really gets at the heart of what the staff is advocating for here, which is trying to keep as many trees as we can. So we took that new plan to the planning commission. It liked the idea, it recommended approval of it, and we hope you'll consider it as well. And this tree impact plan is something we created since the planning commission. We realized it's hard to talk about, you know, trees and making an effort to save trees without having some kind of exhibit to show you what the impact will be. I just told Derek that for the next iteration of this plan, I want the trees we're saving to be shown in green, because there are actually twenty-eight trees here. If you look at the corner of Ashford-Dunwoody and Ravinia Parkway, for example, there are, you know, ten or so trees that are swallowed up in there that you can't really even see. And it's also a similar situation for the trees to the east side of the site or southeast. All you really see are the trees in orange, which is the trees that, you know, theoretically could be removed from the site. The three that you see in the middle, so you've got one large tree at the primary access point, and you've got three trees grouped together, those are the trees that would be impacted by the proposed middle curb cut. And again, there are about twenty-eight trees, and that one change really only affects three. So I think I'm going to stop there. I'm happy to take any questions you have. I'll reserve my time, and we hope that when we come back in two weeks, we'll get a recommendation of approval subject to revised plan and some conditions that we're still working through a little bit with staff.
Okay, so now I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone speaking for this project? I don't, just come on up. You'll have ten minutes. Anybody speaking against the project? Come on up, and you'll have ten minutes. All right, so, oops, I have to first open the public hearing. I apologize. I'm opening the public hearing. Are there any objections? No, seeing none. I've asked people if they want to speak. I'll close the public hearing unless there's objections. A public hearing is closed. And now we will go to questions of staff and the applicant. I'll start on John's end.
Thank you, Lynn. Yeah, I have a couple of questions, then. Let's talk about those trees, the curb cut first thing. So I'm looking at the third page, and it looks like you're trying to save those three trees right in the curve. Is that what I'm looking at, the ones in yellow that are not orange? The orange ones are gone, right?
Yeah, actually, that's a good point. I'm glad you asked about the color. So the orange are the trees that will be removed. There are two, or excuse me, three on the north and south that have nothing to do with the curb cut. They're just impacted for other reasons. That yellow you see is where we're impacting the critical root zone. So that's, that's the purpose for that. All right, so the three you see, there's
Right, the ones that are right on the curve, right? I mean, that's, they're like at the bottom, right in the curve, at the bottom. There's three there in a row.
Yeah, right, so
Down, I'm thinking, right where you're down, 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 right where your parking spots, where you're taking out the parking spots. I'm trying to understand you taking out the parking spots and why.
Got it. All right, so this area here, that doesn't show orange, the area between the two. So that's the area where we remove the park and to try and save those particular trees.
Okay, so you removed parking in order to save the trees?
Correct.
Did you move that exit or that entrance to the horseshoe, the top entrance to the horseshoe? Did you move that south at all?
As far as I know, it's in the same spot. Let me ask Derek to respond to that. Yeah, and if you look at the, so in the exhibit, it might be a little bit small, but if you see some line work on there, what we used was truck turn software to show that. So if that curb was moved down further to the south, that semi wouldn't be able to successfully make that turning movement.
There's some pretty talented truck drivers. I'm not sure.
The software's not as talented as the drivers.
All right, so by putting that horseshoe entrance in, we're still losing those four, those three large now orange trees at the top of the horseshoe entrance.
Correct, yeah. And I think one thing that's important there, that tree actually, to the south of the entrance, we had some conversation about. Because a lot of with the critical root zone, what we would have to do is engage an arborist to give recommendations on what it looks like to save that tree. So there is an effort we could put forth to try to save that, but just with the location of that driveway and the construction activity, we didn't think it would be advisable to put that in the same category as those other trees. So to directly answer your question, yes, those three trees are the ones that we assumed would need to be removed.
Okay. This building is going to be there for the next fifty years. I'm not sure I'm going to make fifty years. I'm not sure this business is going to make fifty years. I hope they're successful and they're forever. Highest and best use of that property, we have gone through office towers, hotels, numerous uses. And I just want to make sure that what we're putting there is the highest and best use. You have a valid application. We're looking at it seriously, and I'm just trying to understand if it's the right thing for right there. And because, again, there's been a whole lot more upzoned compared to where you're coming from today. So it's not the ideal for me, but it can work. I'm looking at photos of other living space facilities in the United States and how they're built out. And I'm trying to understand how your drawings are going to compare to what I'm seeing online, because some of them just look like boxes all one color. These, and some had big stones, some had other details. Explain to me your details in the sense of the look of this building. I see it being brownish. I see lots of glass. And then I'm seeing accents that are browner in color, that are different than the main color. I'm just trying to understand what I'm looking at, because, again, I'm trying to compare it to your other boxes that are available that I'm seeing online.
Okay, so if you turn to, I will choose a number, actually. There's a page that shows the construction materials used. It looks like seven or eight, and hold on one second. It looks like seven or eight and, hold on one second. So it's the ninth page. So it
Show us what it looks like, just to show us. Okay.
So it talks about, you know, some of the materials that generate the look, painted concrete panels in the proposed gray color for you know, one side of the structure, exposed steel painted black. Wood, can't read that exactly. You guys, did you find the right page?
In the presentation online, I can't necessarily read it because the print, but you can, it's here.
Correct.
Right. It's in one of the captures and it says like, local gray granite stone. Is that what you're talking about, John?
Yeah, I'm seeing.
Yeah.
So we spell out the construction materials. It is hard to read on this exhibit. It's there. And I can maybe get a little bit easier to read list. It's just in black and white.
Again, I'm seeing other build outs of the same company, which has maybe a greater use of accents, higher stone use, higher looks, higher quality looks versus the painted concrete panels.
Let me ask Brian to come up. He's
Okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand what you're offering.
Oh, my name's Brian Saltikoff. I'm with Living Spaces, five seventy-three, Cai Popolosa in San Clemente, California.
And if you could adjust the microphone so that you're speaking into it as much as possible, thank you.
Sorry, I'm not the best public speaker.
Okay, so just speak up.
Hammer and nails kinda guy. So what you saw online, that's our sort of typical large, single-story footprint, sort of like a prototype that we try to repeat. Those are mostly in Texas. The limestone that you see is indigenous to Texas. Here in Dunwoody, they're going for a different look mainly to fit on the site. The site is a little bit challenging for us to get you know, that, that size of a retail footprint on there. So they're going to the, the three-story. So the underground parking with two stories. The designers, we try to, you know, incorporate the brand colors. Those are, you see those browns and those earth tones. Those are brand colors. There's a lot of the glazing, the storefront that you see sort of fits in, I think, more with the perimeter area. You see a lot of that around in this area as well. So again, I'm, I'm more of a hammer and nails kinda guy, not the designers. I can't speak specifically. And I know, you know, some of these materials, you know, they're subject to change, as you know, if they're, if we're able to even procure specific ones, given you know, the market conditions and through the uncertainty. So right now, you know, it is a concept. And, you know, we, we think it's a nice product. Hopefully, we hope you agree as well. So if there's, you know, any specific things that we can answer, I can always circle back with the architects.
I'm sure others will touch on the amenities and maybe the restaurant. I'm interested to hearing all of that. The other thing that I pulled off looking at your website was that you have outlet centers and distribution centers. This is your first place in Georgia.
That's right.
Tell me, is this gonna be an outlet center as well?
No, this is, this is strictly retail, sort of destination shopping. Usually our outlet centers is sort of a new concept for us the last couple of years. They're attached to a large distribution center. We're currently working on one right now in Humboldt, Texas. It's attached to about a six hundred thousand foot distribution center. And we've got about a hundred and twenty thousand square foot of outlet center with sort of nicer finishes. It doesn't have like the typical sort of warehouse look to it inside. It's got finishes, LVT flooring, conditioned space as well. This particular site, we're currently looking for about a fifty thousand square foot crossstock. So with, you know, the product would ship from Texas and go straight through the crossstock either to the store or to the customers' residence. And we also are in the process of looking for a larger sort of six hundred, eight hundred thousand square foot distribution center in Atlanta area. And there could be, you know, potentially an outlet center attached.
But this is your one and only store in Georgia at the moment.
This is our first, this is our the furthest east we've, we've stretched out so far. So this is our first foray into this market.
Alright, well, done. I guess my request would really be, I wanna see a little bit more of the finishes. Just try, if there's ways in which you could tie down the painted concrete somehow. I just, I wasn't sure what that meant.
Like, like a, like a materials, physical samples?
Again, we, it's the higher end finishes, that, that section of the city, I wanna kinda know what's going there.
So more detailed.
A little bit more detailed. I mean, I'm seeing glass and I'm seeing walls, but I'm not seeing what those walls are made out of, what they look. I'm just trying to compare it against your other stores and what you're looking at to see how this compares.
Right, our, our typical stores are tilt-up concrete with the finishes that you see, the pop-outs, the different color bands and the signage as well. And this is a, this is a different product.
Well, it's a very large building. It's a lot of roof surface area and, you know. Who knows, maybe you can put that restaurant on a rooftop, rooftop living. So anyway, just, I, I, I'm done questioning. I just wanted
I can circle back with the materials.
Alright. I, I appreciate it. Thank you for your answers and thank you, Dan.
Go ahead, Joe.
So I'm, I'm a big process guy, so you gave us some changes tonight. Madeline, you presented some stuff to us. What has changed from the last time this was presented and voted on by the planning commission? What have we been introduced to new? That the planning commission has not seen or had input on?
There's nothing. I, I mean, the, the tree exhibit you see is new. They didn't consider it as part of the deliberation, but it really was generated out of that conversation, right? Talking about how trees will be impacted by the middle curb cut. We definitely discussed that. We showed them the two site plans you see, pages one and two here. We just started thinking we need to sort of better understand that ourselves, because when we're talking about saving trees or providing recompense on the rest of the property, we need to, I need a little bit more understanding. So that, that's what this was generated for. There's really, in terms of the request, I don't, there's nothing different.
Alright, you concur, Madeline, on that. What, okay, thanks. So I've got a few different this might be directed more to staff or not, but let's see, I've got a bunch of handwritten notes. Do we have a, so the current conditions, and I, I sent an email back to staff this afternoon looking at what was currently zoned, the difference of pervious versus impervious. What's presented now versus what is currently approved? Like to get that idea of. I would like to know what kind of reduction of heat island, reduction of stormwater drainage, what kind of sustainable treatment, a green roof, et cetera. Is any of that under consideration? That's, that's another one. I could, if you wanna respond or I could just give you the list, Madeline, do you wanna kinda interject a few bit? Then, Dan, thanks.
So I did look at the previous rezoning from twenty nineteen. Unfortunately, in all of the rezoning documents, I could not find a lot coverage calculation. However, eyeballing it, it looks essentially the same and they'll abide by the maximum lot coverage restrictions for the perimeter center zoning district, which I believe is eighty percent.
And is the applicant entertaining any above and beyond for the green roof, the heat island reduction? You know, an additional gray water recycling, stormwater drainage, pervious, impervious, pervious pavers, those things?
No, the, the site plan is not fully engineered. It's not immensely detailed, so that's not discussed in the application.
Okay, so it's not discussed. So if it's not in the application, then it's one of these we could ask them, but they don't have to do it. But we could put it as a condition potentially?
Yes.
I'll just, again, these are conversations. Would the applicant be willing to put in a nice sign at the roof that says, welcome to Dunwoody?
We actually talked about that.
We, we can
Welcome to
Talk about that.
Gateway, gateway signs.
Let me, I'm making notes here.
Two, two, it's, it's either a gateway signage at the, at grade. Um, we, right, we work, or up on the, on the roof. Okay.
Hold on one second.
Yeah, sure. So just, you always ask. That's, that's fun stuff. Just, again, based on what happens with, we have a wait, we finding initiative happening this current year. Any other considerations about wanting, it's, it's, you know, under, under parking? But if you think about trying to expand green space, the, the footprint of going up three stories instead of two, and then all of a sudden, we, we've got all sorts of more green space to work with, unaccommodating, a loading dock and et cetera.
I mean, again, I can, we can talk a little bit about that. That's not something we talked about.
And then the, so in the packet that the staff presented on page eleven, it talks about the northern curb cut associated driveway and thirteen spaces adjacent to Ravinia Parkway, needlessly endanger several healthy trees, prohibit any future installation, frontage improvements consistent with the overlay. So Madeline, if you could help me just clarify, is, I still see the, that part, are we, is staff recommending that this northern parking spaces be eliminated? Is that what staff is recommending? It says for these thirteen spaces adjacent to Ravinia parking.
So the thirteen spaces referenced in my staff report?
Yes.
I think I, when I was amending my staff report, I didn't amend that correct portion. So the thirteen parking spaces was referencing their previous site plan where they showed thirteen parking spaces between the two southernmost curb cuts, which they did remove those thirteen parking spaces. But they're still keeping the curb cut in the driveway, again, which staff feels the curb cut in the driveway still needlessly endangers several of those trees.
Okay, yeah, cuz I was just reading the sentence alone and I'm reading it in the northern curb cut and thinking that's the northern parking. Thinking that you were recommending eliminating those parking spaces in that northern section.
So we didn't recommend that, but it's something you choose to do.
Well, it's shifting around space. I, I'm shifting around space. So, and just back to the loading dock and stuff, of course, I'm not a transportation engineer, i.e. a trans tractor trailer engineer. But are there examples nationwide of what you're proposing for the staff to eliminate the bottom, you know, do a back in, back out? What, what would happen if we stuck with the staff recommendation for eliminating that curb cut and just having that back one? How do tractor trailers engage and come in and out of there with, with that proposal?
Well, the only option is to, you know, basically come down Ravinia Parkway, pull past the site on the road with cars driving around, pack it in, you know, I mean, it just, to me, it's crazy. I mean, you would never as a municipality encourage somebody to use, you know, a public traveling road to back up and turn around a tractor trailer. But that, that's, that's the way it would have to work. That's really the only way to get in and out of the site. Or not only the tractor trailers, but the delivery vans and trucks for the cafe, as well as the folks coming to pick up whatever furniture they ordered on.
Ri- Richard, do you mind chime in just to say, for examples or, you know, best practice?
All over Atlanta and many big cities are very small footprints of buildings and they unfortunately have to maneuver those trucks. On this roadway, each lane is two lanes wide. So the truck could pull down there, traffic can go by and it backs right in. So we felt it was more important to save those trees than our third curb cut.
Yeah, and me, me coming from the army, you always have a ground guide when you're backing up anyway. So if you got two lanes, the guys pulling in there and then so it's a matter of a couple of minutes, they're, they're out of it. Alright, let me see what the, this is a hundred and ten thousand square feet. Is there a reference of what, what it, what did that look like around here? What other retail stops are about a hundred and ten thousand, just for a reference, point of reference? I don't know, if you could just, as a takeaway, I don't know, just how do I example? Is it the, you know, is it a Bed Bath &amp; Beyond? Is it a Rooms to Go? I mean, what, just an idea?
Richard, do you have an example?
Yeah, right. Page nine on the PDF, it talks about the applicant request relief installing the six hundred and sixty foot required street financial in Ravinia. Was that also in the existing piece of zoning, the, the prior? Was that also exempted? In the, in the, as is it's today?
Two thousand nineteen?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that, that was a complete, there was
Yeah.
All the way to
Okay, okay. The crosswalk, and I sent the email, I'm a big proponent of raised crosswalks as traffic calming as well. I understand, confirm this, Ravinia Parkway is privately owned? Is that?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't know what the posted speed limits are there, but I'm, I'm a big proponent of a raised crosswalk instead of just painting, because you know, if you just paint white lines. So if you could entertain that with our public works director and so on, look at what a raised crossing would look like, it just helps it feel safer and comfortable to walk across.
We'll take that to, there's HOA for Ravinia and actually the engineer just mentioned to me, there's a height restriction that's imposed by the HOA and the building height that we're showing here in this plan is as tall as the HOA won't allow, or at least the HOA documents.
Until they were approved to build the eight-story hotel.
Well, I mean, on this property, right?
But they, they're, they're improved, it is an approved eight-story hotel right now on the plan. Oh, interesting. Okay, I thought it was just one parcel. The current plan right now is approved. It's, okay. Alright, and back to the crosswalks. I also, on the, on Ashford Dunwoody, there's right turn slip lane onto Ravinia Parkway. And I know in the existing conditions there, I appreciate we had already approved, like, putting a pedestrian landing on the north side of the intersection, condition number four. I'm a big proponent of that, that's supportive. In conjunction, I would also like to entertain on the Ashford Dunwoody, that right turn slip lane into Ravinia. If we could just raise that crossing as well, in right, it's just, it's just a white stripe line. And it, and cars just treated as a, they're gonna, so again, raising that, it just adds to our safety for people on foot on that little, little slip lane there. I think I might have done it through space. Yeah, so anyway, I think I've got, oh, let me just double check my email. Yeah, lead measures, anything like that would be nice to know about.
Is, are all those things you just wrote off in the email you sent to staff? I, I hope I got it.
I got most of those in the email to staff. I will make sure, a couple of things that we just talked about. So, yeah, I sent it to Madeline earlier. But yeah, um, yeah, that's okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Stacy.
I just have a couple of questions of clarification. So right now, Heinz owns the Gracino, or who owns the Gracino? Who?
Heinz or a Heinz-related entity is mine.
Okay, so who will is Living Spaces buying the land and the building or is Heinz a property developer building the building? And who's going to own it?
My understanding is Living Spaces is actually buying the property and will own it in the building.
Buying the land and the property?
Yes.
Okay. So I like Magnolia and Property Brothers as much as a next person. But I'm looking at the about us and living spaces and it just says, we're committed to making your shopping experience as great and wonderful as we can. What do we do with a hundred and ten thousand square foot furniture shopping space that is owned by a company in California when the TV personalities get divorced and their show goes away?
We've talked about that. So we, you know, that, we do have a plan B. The idea is it's a co-working space, so it would park and it's, I mean,
Where does that live? Like, can we put that? Because what I don't wanna end up with as a gateway, a hundred and ten thousand square foot empty building that we don't know what to do with.
Right. Understood. That, that, again, that's a fair concern and one we've thought through as well. And we believe because of the architecture of the outside of the building and the open space, or certainly the layout internally, that it would make an ideal co-working space and it would park. So that is an option we think would fit into what's going on in a central perimeter now would make sense today, frankly. Or at least in a non-COVID time. Makes sense in that too distant future. So there is a plan B. There is an option for this property if, you know, God forbid, Living Spaces goes out of business.
Okay. As you know, I always like to jump around my questions. You never know what you're gonna get from me. So the question with the, if we don't allow the middle curb cut, are there still parking spaces there? I didn't understand that.
So, I mean, we, we bounced around trying to figure out a way to respond to staff's condition, but with the way staff has now drawn the plan, there would, their cutoff effectively for the middle driver would just be north of those or page north of those four spaces you see. So from that point down, I think the, the layout's essentially the So from that point down, I think the layout's essentially the same as we proposed. So there would be 10 spaces in that area.
And, and this is having older parents who have to have handicap parking. Can you tell me, where is the handicap parking? How many spaces? And what is the access from the underground parking to the store?
So there's gonna probably be, there's gonna be a few different buckets there where, so what we've tried to do is if you look at those 10 spaces that Dan was just referring to, there'd probably be an ADA spot down there, and it's more from an equity perspective, but when we have different pockets of surface parking, we would allocate a space to each one of those. The majority of it that would be underneath the building would have, my understanding is that the elevator, there would be an elevator that would bring you up from that ground level parking onto the showroom level.
Um, my next question that, there's no rhyme or reason, the 285 managed lanes, how does that impact this and will it still look good? I know that's a big TBD, so I'll just throw that one out there, might be a rhetorical question.
Yeah, I, I would say the best answer we have for you this time is we're working with Public Works on the concept plans that have been prepared, and we're making sure that the appropriate rooms allocated for those improvements. So it's not the most direct answer, but we, we are having those conversations with staff to make sure it's accommodated. And let me add one thing to that. So at, at some point before my involvement, Derek from Kimley Horn got an overlay effectively of the site from Michael Smith, and put that on this property. And the, the building you see is not where he's, where Derek started, okay? Because of that area, we had to make a modification to the shape of the building. So we had another call with Michael today, and we're gonna run back. We've asked for a new overlay effectively so it could run it off this building, and we'll be able to make sure we, what we've attempted to and think we left the area that that 285 improvement needs, we're just making sure right now.
And my one last question is actually for Brian. What would I have seen on the, on, I was just out in Arizona. What would I have seen just right alongside I-10, just west of Phoenix? I mean, it was a living spaces, is that just a distribution center, is that a warehouse? It was just literally right on the side of my ten.
It's a distribution center and a retail showroom. So back house is the distribution center, and the front is a fully finished out retail showroom.
I wish I would have walked in there, I didn't have other things to do. Okay, I'm done.
Catherine?
Thank you, just a quick question on the critical root zone. If you have your impacted trees, you've got seven trees. If you lose them after construction, I assume, will you be replacing them? Or greenery of some sort?
Well, try this a couple of different ways. Number one, we are already going to have to compensate for almost all of those seven trees somewhere on the property. So we'll be planting additional DBH somewhere else on the property even now. I, I think we're open to a condition, I really haven't had that thought. I mean, we're focused on actually trying to save them, but if we were to lose them, I think we would absolutely be agreeable to a condition where we say, look, within, you know, we will plant a tree of X size, assuming it can be done, you know, because there's a huge root ball in the ground, but let me follow up on that. If, if we lose a tree and we can replant something, the good there will do it, but I need to get a little more information on that.
Okay, that's all I had, thanks, Dan.
Rob?
All right, I, I just have a couple of issues. One is to kind of jump on some of the sustainability issues that Joe raised. Is there any plan or, or any willingness for lead certification for the building construction for this site?
I'm taking that down, I, I can't answer that now.
So that's my question, is, I'd be interested to see if the builder would be willing to do a lead certification. And then the other question is, in looking through the packet for the, I guess, the, the open space, I'm kind of at the north side along Ashford Dunwoody. It's not real clear to me what that area is gonna look like. Some of the sketches have kind of a fence and some picnic tables, and you go further in the packet, and there's, you know, a dozen different conceptual designs. I guess I'd be interested in more of a concept of what that might look like.
You talking about the courtyard?
Yeah, I, I guess, whatever the green, it's like the green lawn and kind of open area, kind of what that might look like, and if there's any consideration that, that might be made for some sort of art installation there or something, that, that's kind of right as you come into the city. So if you had some kind of sculpture or something, I think that that might be kind of a, a nice aesthetic addition to that. But I, I would just be interested to know what that might look like. So those are, those are my two, I guess, questions or issues.
All right, hold on one second.
What is she saying?
This?
You have that, and then if you go like way deep into our packet, there's a whole bunch of different designs that don't look like that, so I guess I just.
Yeah, let me try and match it up. I'm not sure the order of these, this, these images came out of a much larger collection of images. So let me see if I can put it together in a way that makes sense, I'll, I'll work on that.
Uh, thank you. And my, my questions, I'm gonna kind of revisit some of the things, but I'll try to expand on them rather than rehash what's already been said. And Madeline, some of these will pertain to you, I don't know if you just wanna pop up, pop up now or, or when it, when it's, when it's appropriate. My first question deals with condition five, which is the, kind of that southeastern portion. And it was part of the condition for, for not doing the streetscaping and saving the trees and dedicating a 20-foot easement to the city down there. And, you know, I never look a gift horse in the mouth, I appreciate saving the trees, but the skeptic in me says this isn't about saving trees, it's about money and the cost of putting the sidewalk in there. So that's fine, as long as we can save those trees, I'm good, that's good with me. But that piece of property is kind of, based on the, the rest of the development, kind of looks like a throwaway for, for the developer. And so what I would like to see this changed a little bit, because just getting that 20-foot easement presents the city with the same problem. Are we gonna go in and remove all those mature trees to put in the sidewalk? Probably not, probably more desirable thing, if we ever were to do something, would be to kind of take it down that slope and maybe behind the trees, maybe to connect to perhaps a future multi-use trail that might go underneath GDOT's project. We, the bottom line is, we don't know what's gonna be there, especially with the big uncertainty with GDOT. So I would love to have some more flexibility, and rather than just a 20-foot easement from the curb, I would love to see, or, or dedication, I'd love to see more of a flexibility with a 20-foot easement that anywhere in that piece of property that we deemed appropriate to perhaps put a trail through there at some future point, if it became viable, that would be my preference.
Tom, you're talking about like the tail?
Yeah, yeah, that, yeah, yeah, the little, yeah, little panhandle there, yeah. Because, you know, I went on JIS and I was playing with it, and like at the narrowest point, it's about 40 feet. At the widest part, it's a little under 80 feet. So there's really nothing you can do there with the trees there. So I would just like to have the flexibility to, to put a, a trail wherever it would be most appropriate there. Again, dealing with the landscape, the, the, the landscape issues in the slope there. So if, if you would consider changing that condition to those terms, that would be favorable for me. Condition number eight deals with the tree removal, and, and I'll say this, I, I do appreciate your efforts to save trees here, and I also appreciate you guys being upfront with us with this latest thing and, and coming to us and letting us know, hey, these trees may be in danger, rather than getting out there and moving the dirt around and the bulldozers, they, well, you know, this gotta come down now. So, because that's, that's happened before, where we've gotten a site plan where trees are getting saved, and then construction starts and the trees disappear. And once that happens, there's nothing you can do about it. So I do appreciate you being upfront about that. With that said, I want to do everything possible to, to save those trees. I know, you know, condition eight, you already mentioned a little bit about a one-to-one replacement. I'll be honest with you from, and again, not, I'll give you the benefit of the doubt, but on a big project like this, the cost of placing a couple of trees, you know, versus saving them is, is a throwaway for you guys. So I don't think there's much incentive as a developer to, to put a lot of effort into saving those trees. So I would like to either make every effort to change the plan to accommodate it. And one way might be down at the bottom, since, you know, I do support, and I'll get a little bit more into this later, the removing that middle curb cut. And in doing so, we could probably get some concrete out of there to get out of those critical root zones, but those three trees in the middle where the parking spaces used to be, and save those. But I like the conditions to have a little bit more impact for the tree removal to, to make sure that every effort is being made, and that if, in fact, they do have to go, because these aren't just, this isn't just, you know, a bunch of pine trees, these are, you know, three-foot diameter mature oak trees with beautiful canopies, these are, these are statement trees, and, and they really need to, to be saved. So I'd, I'd like to have the, the tree removal and condition eight be a little bit more impactful. Regarding the site plan, again, Rob, Rob touched on this, the plaza area. Looking at the site plan, looking at the renderings, I'm having a difficult time. Is, is that, that main courtyard area, is that gonna be some sort of impervious pavement? Is it gonna be just concrete? I'd like to have a little bit more definition on what's gonna be there. And the Ashford Dunwoody streetscape. I've got some confusion here. It's the, the, the application says it's basically, you know, again, we're making modifications to the original zoning. The, the initial approved, the existing approved zoning calls for an eight-foot multi-use path and an eight-foot landscape buffer. And unless I'm reading it wrong, the site, both the site plan and the renderings have flip-flopped the order of that. So they're, they're showing the sidewalk up at the curb, and then the landscape buffer between the, the sidewalk and the building. The initial site plan for the approved zoning shows, as it should be, the landscape buffer between Ashford Dunwoody and, and the multi-use trail. So I just want to be, and, and also the rendering showed that same way with the sidewalk out at the street and the landscape. So I want to ensure that landscape buffer is in fact a buffer and is between.
I'm just, does Madeline need to come answer your question?
Uh, if, if she, if she, if she knows the answer, that'd be great.
I, I can answer it. So we are showing a nape-foot landscape strip and a nape-foot sidewalk, but it's a little confusing, I think, that honeycomb you see, because we were trying to identify the right-of-way in that area, but we're, we're basically proposing the same streetscape that was already approved back in 2019.
Okay, but there, there.
So what's next to the street?
The sidewalk is next to the street, as the way I'm reading the site plan, and also in the renderings, the sidewalk is next to the street. There are some of the renderings that show the sidewalk up to the curb.
Yeah, and I, I can't speak to the renderings, I can tell you from the site plan, it's, it's absolutely the street buffer eight feet, the sidewalk eight feet. And I actually had it, for any level of comfort, it is a copy and paste exercise from the previous zoning where that cross-section is identical and the right-of-way dedication to the previous conditions, so along Ashford Dunwoody.
And I actually even did pull up the site plan from the original zoning, and they are different. It, it clearly shows landscape buffer, trail, building.
Right.
Again, I'm, I'm not an engineer, but I'm not. I just want to make sure that's, that's clear, that that's how that, that will be constructed.
It, it will be.
Okay.
Eight-foot street buffer and then the sidewalk outside of that. And there's a note here, sort of towards the bottom, above a quarter of that streetscape section that says, Ashford Dunwoody Street Frontage, eight-foot street buffer, eight-foot multi-use path.
Yeah, yeah, and again, as long as that's what's going in, I'm, I'm happy. I just want to, because I didn't read it, the site plan or the renderings don't depict it that way. So since it's a site plan approval, I want to make sure we're getting what we think we're getting. Okay, let's see, site plan, okay. Exhibit, Exhibit C, that's about the curb cuts, I do support the staff's recommendations on that, and, and removing that, that center curb cut. You know, the, the, the questions we made about the trucks, and, and Richard kind of pointed out that that happens everywhere in, in cities, you know, and quite, quite frankly, that's, you know, that is a private road that kind of loops around, there's an in and out, there's two ways in and out of there. My experience there is your heavy volume on that portion of the road will be in the morning when people are coming into the office. The rest of the day, there's practically no traffic there, it's all going out at the end of the day. So I, I would imagine that deliveries can be scheduled to accommodate the traffic schedule to make that least intrusive. Also looking, and again, I know these aren't exactly to scale, but looking at the little diagram of the truck going through your little U, and it looks like the cab still has to get out onto Ravinia Parkway anyway to perform that U-turn, so you're blocking the road anyway, so you might as well get rid of that center curb cut if, if we're gonna be doing that anyway. So that, that's what I'd like to say, and I'd also, this, this would be more from Alan. For the, when this comes before us for a vote, I want to ensure that the site plan accurately reflects i- if in fact we're doing this modification, that that is inflected, reflected on the site plan, because the current site plan in the packet does not show that. So, oh, and again, I just want to make sure we're approving a site plan specific rezoning that the site plan shows, and, and that way we could also see specifically what we're gonna get from as far as, you know, what parking may be there, how it might impact the trees and all of that. So I believe that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, I have just a couple of things. One, to Joe's point about a Dunwoody sign somewhere on the side or front, and to Rob's point about public art, those are very important. This is, so to me, I understand, and it didn't feel like he needs to explain how we got here. I mean, we've seen the zoning history, to me, this is not necessarily the greatest use of this land. However, I understand with the HOA management in Ravinia, the limitations of IHG and the hotels, that this is not exactly what I would want, but it's not terrible, which, you know what I mean? Like, I always envisioned some big shiny high-rise there, but I understand the concerns of those building owners in Ravinia that traffic, pre-COVID anyway, is enough, and they much more interested in a low-impact use, and I respect that. I want it, to John's point, to look like a shiny, I mean, to me, something that belongs in a dense urban area, even though it's relatively low-dense use. And so I want it to look like what we think Ravinia and new, other new construction in the perimeter looks like. The, because it is, people turn off the interstate, well, who knows what the interstate's gonna function like, but right now, people turn off the interstate, and they're in Dunwoody, and they're in perimeter, which is a sophisticated commercial area, and that's what we're striving for. I'm a little confused, so this is the same parcel, though, that we rezone for the hotel? Or is this parcel smaller than the re, so Madeline, is this the same piece of property? Or is it only part of that piece of property? Is it?
It's the same piece of property.
Okay.
Lot lines have not been adjusted.
Okay, so I'm not totally sure, I, I guess it's the placement of the building is the problem why we can't go up to three stories? Because I wouldn't mind if it was three stories and was leaving more green space. I think we've got to figure out the curb cut. Part of the inherent beauty of, and what makes Ravinia different than, say, something you'll find in Brookhaven or Sandy Springs, is the tree-lined gateway, and it was done intentionally. Like you said, those trees were planted, so I anticipate the next week or so you'll work that out with staff. And I think that's all I have for now. Anybody else? All right, oh, John?
I'd just like to agree with the public art aspect and that Ashford Dunwoody, that intersection, and the views coming off the highway, that's, that's, that's Dunwoody right there. So I mean, it's just a matter of, what does it say? Is there any public art? Is there any way to enhance that corner? Because that corner is a cornerstone of the city of Dunwoody. So you're, I, I did look through the PDF, and I did see the, the more descriptive, the painted concrete panels, painted repose gray, Sherwin-Williams. I mean, you've given me kind of what I'm looking for, but I'm just not sure it's accurate or what I really want compared to some of the other.
I'm gonna come back to some more detail on that, I, I think I understand it. If you don't mind, so I want to make sure I understand the public art. I, I thought when, I forget who raised it. I thought you were saying up, up here, are you saying down?
We're saying down, I'm saying down there, I'm saying on Ashford Dunwoody or in the, like, I'm assuming, I'm looking at a picture, well, I guess I'm looking at the same picture on the screen as you are. And where the picnic tables are, that's Ashford Dunwoody, right?
Right.
And I think Rob is talking, maybe he's talking about something different. I'm talking about something there, that when people, like, aren't there, but the Dunwoody sign, some, actually, when I spoke, when this idea was presented to me, I said, and I think they thought I was half kidding, can Dunwoody be on the side of the building as you come up the interstate or come past it? You know, some acknowledgement that this is Dunwoody, because people don't really know that. But I don't know where Rob was thinking public art.
I don't know that I knew where, I was thinking either, I just think that, as everybody's noted, this is, you know, a gateway to the city, so something signature would be nice.
Right.
Figure out a way to incorporate it.
And it could be right there, too. I mean, it could be, we can talk about the where, we have. And it could be right there, too. I mean, it could be, we can talk about the where. We have a great public art commission. We're definitely willing to partner on this, like we can facilitate it, but. It it's often a condition of rezonings in communities with a vibrant public art. We're just a, we're just. Finishing our first year of public art and so we can certainly work with y'all, but I think it can be a condition.
Let me, let me. I need to have some conversations on that.
Okay, I don't, you know, I don't know. It doesn't have to be, you know, huge. There's all kinds of different things.
Right.
It could be a fountain.
Right. On your, in your, whatever we called it, the courtyard.
Somebody said something about a mural. Is that in keeping?
It can, if if they're interested in that.
Right. There's a lot of glass on that side. Let me, let me.
Yeah, and it can be a metal statue. You know how to do this.
Yeah, let me, let me just talk it through and see what physically makes sense.
Right. It can be a metal stat, it can be a statue. It can be anything.
Colony Square.
World's biggest.
In front of Colony Square, that's an example.
Not really, sorry.
Yeah.
But I mean, it can be, this is my understanding from the meeting. And from the materials is is that this is a supposed to be a destination shopping. That uh correct? And so make it feel like a destination shopping as opposed to across the street.
Got it.
So. Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Harris, do you have an agenda change?
Yes, I would like to remove item number eleven off the consent agenda, please.
And it will become the, it'll. Sharon, it will go before thirteen, so I guess it'll become the new twelve.
It'll become the new twelve.
Yes.
I second that motion.
Okay, uh so there's a motion by Stacy to remove I, item eleven from the consent agenda. And make it the new number twelve under the business items. Second by John, any further discussion, any other amendment uh? Motion, any other? Agenda changes? All right, seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, uh number eleven is now number twelve under business.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Move by John, second by Stacy. Uh Sharon, that was a motion to approve the amended consent agenda. Any discussion? Any questions? Uh, seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes unanimously. All right, so the new number twelve. Um Sharon has to read it.
Just give me one moment.
I know you, it's fine. We all understand.
Mayor, this is a second read of an ordinance to amend the text of chapter twenty seven. To create regulations for party houses. Madeline Smith.
So the amendment under consideration is related to party houses. So. Um, we have defined party houses as a new use. Um, the aim is to regulate commercial events in residential homes. So by commercial event, we mean any party or ceremony or reception. Where a fee is charged for the use of the dwelling and or entry to the dwelling. Uh, party houses would be required to obtain a special administrative permit. Uh, prior to hosting an event, this is already an established process that we have for other types of um zoning requests. So they would follow that same process. Um, we are specifically targeting commercial events. So this does not prevent residents from using their homes for their own private events. Um, the intention is to prevent nuisances and maintain the residential character of neighborhoods. Um, party houses have presented challenges in other places like Atlanta and Sandy Springs. This ordinance is modeled after theirs. Um, party houses are not necessarily a problem in Dunwoody. We have had, I believe, one or two issues previously. Um, but this is more of a preventative measure. Um, after the uh first or during the first read at the last council meeting. Um, there were some concerns brought up about what um are the punishments for these types of violations. Um, and so uh the violation of the zoning ordinance, because this is part of chapter twenty seven. So violation of that uh can result in a max, a maximum one thousand dollar fine and or up to six months in jail. Um, the main enforcers of this um uh. Regulation would likely be PD. Um, since a lot of these nuisances happen in the evening when code enforcement isn't available, but code enforcement would also be. Involved um in assisting PD on these types of issues. Um, at the planning commission meeting, they did recommend approval. Um, and again, since the previous meeting, there haven't been any amendments made to the ordinance. Um, we just offered some clarification again. On the violation aspect. Um, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them. Thank you.
Anybody have questions? Surely someone has questions.
So I think one of our concerns from the first read was a thousand dollars is nothing to these people. So.
We want our.
We, how do we, one, my question is, what do our neighboring jurisdictions do? Is it only a thousand dollars or they up their game? And number two, why aren't we upping our game? Because like we said, a thousand dollars is nothing. Um, number three, I walk me through if I have a party house next door to me and I call. And I decide to call nine one one at eleven o'clock. Walk me through that process of what happens to that party house and am I given? You know, respite from the party house that night or do I have to wait until they go to court?
Um, so in relation to the first question, um that was discussed with our legal staff, that can be handled outside of the amendment to chapter twenty seven itself. Um, and then in regards to what happens, I think I might actually refer to either Richard or.
Chief.
Chief, please to address that question.
Yes, chief is here.
Yes, if code enforcement is involved, we can make the parties. Century stop, but.
But eleven o'clock at night, we don't have code enforcement on call.
No, if it was a illegal party house uh under this statute, we would close it down. We'd pull the plug on their music and shut them down.
So why if we're going to pass this tax text amendment, why aren't we doing a concurrent tax amendment to? Up the punitive damage? Why aren't we upping the punishment at the same time?
So I can't answer that question, but I can say that and and maybe our attorney could weigh in if he's online. But you know, it has to do with the fact that this is a misdemeanor and in Georgia, you can only do so much with a misdemeanor charge. Uh, which is a thousand dollar fine and six months in jail, which is uh uh because it's an ordinance violation.
So can.
I'm not an attorney.
Right, can Bill chime in? Because I think Sandy Springs did more than that.
I can, I certainly can, mayor.
Okay.
Uh, what I would suggest to you is that a thousand dollars and the six months are the maximums. But you can also set thresholds for minimums also, council member. So I would suggest to you that. Perhaps that you would want to say on a first offense that there would be a minimum of ten days in jail. Uh, as as part of the offense, because you can enhance the punishment of minimum. And and then you perhaps put in there, but that would could be suspendable uh on at the judge's discretion. So you would, you wouldn't box yourself into some. Potential case that you didn't want somebody to go to jail on. But you would always have the the, that is the is the baseline of what your expectation is that the judges should do.
And is that? Uh, something we change in this ordinance or is that something we change in a different ordinance or in a different way?
Uh, I, I think you could put it in this ordinance. That uh that you could put a penalty provision within this ordinance. The general penalty is what we, we, we wouldn't change the general penalties. Uh, for the purposes of doing an ordinance, I would put it in this ordinance. And then if at some point in time when it's codified by the MUNICO people, they find a better place to put it, they can always. Set uh set it in a different place in our in our codified ordinances.
Go ahead, Stacy.
I'm gonna add one thing real quick, uh just as an FYI, is uh. As uh community development said, you know, we're not having a big issue with this.
Right.
And I don't know that we'll have one moving forward, certainly with the adoption of the ordinance. Uh, I spoke to the chief in Sandy Springs today and since they've adopted their ordinance, they've had zero cases. So just as an FYI.
So what, we didn't have any problem until Sandy Springs adopted their ordinance and then within two months, somebody bought a million and a half dollar party house. So. That's the challenge. Is Sandy Springs penalties? I thought they were more severe than this. They're the same.
I didn't ask.
Okay, and I think what, Richard, I think what they're doing differently primarily is they're going after the owners of the houses now and. Threatening jail as opposed to the party host.
Yeah, we could, we could look at that. Most often. The owners are not even involved. They're not even there.
But it's ultimately, that's how they are stopping it in Sandy Springs is because the owners. Now that are running through Airbnb or whatever, which also is not legal in Dunwoody. The criminals or people with ill intentions don't care. Is that we have to hold ultimately the owner accountable. And so that's where we are.
I, I'm fine with the text meant as it is now because we need it.
Right.
I also want more.
Right.
So I don't know whether we pass it now and give direction to staff to add to it.
I think we pass it now.
Okay.
We don't want people coming in and buying houses.
Correct.
Okay, John.
Ellen, you brought up the uh question that I wanted to raise and that was the Airbnb and the short-term rental. Madeline, can you give us a quick update on what's allowed and what's not allowed?
So our code uh specifically um states in our residential section, um where we define residential use in chapter twenty seven. It states that you are not allowed to rent a home for less than thirty days. Uh, because that's considered short-term rental and that rules out Airbnb, um unless for some reason they are. Accommodating someone for more than thirty days.
Great, thank you. We've, we've, we've had issues like this in the past where a house might have a pool. And therefore it's more of a rental for a party function than that now. Uh, Richard, if our residents see Airbnb rentals advertised online. Does code enforcement able to take any proactive aspect based on the advertising of a home for less than the?
Yes, we have, we have, in fact, there was one uh that there was. We went up the lady in court. And we checked it. She went back and started advertising again for short term, so we got her again.
Okay, so that if code enforcement is enforcing the short-term rentals on public sites, that's also. Some aspect of the same sort of thing, so. Um, yeah, I'm I'm good with passing this. If we need to tighten it up, maybe we should have. Um, look at all of our penalties to make sure they're adequate and haven't need to be raised, lowered or just reviewed. So maybe it's an overall check to a certain extent, too.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you. I appreciate the input.
Anybody else? Okay, this is some.
Move to approve.
Second.
Uh Sharon, that was moved by Stacy, second by Joe. Any further discussion?
I would just like to have it move forward and 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 have that review and do it a minimum and.
Like, right, let's make sure that our penalties. Match Sandy Springs because I don't think it was a coincidence this happened two months after they went public with their new rules. All right, calling the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh Sharon, that passes unanimously. Oh, next is me. Every two years, we elect a mayor pro tem. Um, who serves. Uh, in case I cannot or I'm, yeah, so um.
Uh, Madam Mayor, if I so may, uh I propose the nomination of the senior and most honorable representative District Three. At large, Mr. John Henigan as mayor pro tem.
Okay.
Second.
Uh Sharon, that was a motion uh mayor pro tem for John Henigan, a second by Councilwoman Harris. Any discussion, questions, comments? Now we have a uh all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Right, Sharon, that's unanimous.
Which one was it?
Right, right. You can, you can vote against yourself. You're still, right, you could vote against yourself and you would still win. Um. All right, I think Sharon, you have to read the next thingamajigga. Yes, thank you, John, for serving. Right, just one moment.
Okay, Mayor, the next, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
The next item is an emergency ordinance of the mayor council of the city of Dunwoody, Georgia, under section one point oh three. Of the charter of the city of Dunwoody, Georgia, declaring local emergency of the novel coronavirus disease twenty twenty one dash twenty twenty two. Omicron variant global pandemic and for other purposes.
Bill, do you have anything you want to say? This is.
Just this very briefly, this is simply for the purpose of Zoom meetings. If if it occurs, you don't have to call Zoom meetings. But we wanted to go ahead and have this emergency ordinance in place if things got worse. Uh, so that's, that's why we did it, but it it that it has no other limitations on. Any activity that the council or the boards or commissions might want to do.
Right, and we have members of boards and commissions who are already expressing concerns about in-person meetings and we. Particularly want to be able to accommodate those and have quorums and everything and this is. What we need to do. So any other questions or discussions?
Quick question. So does this mean that for public comment, for our meetings, it's allowable on Zoom again?
It would be.
Yes, it would be. Go ahead, Joe.
So and then from us perspective, uh do we still need the quorum present?
No, and on a call this morning with GMA, their opinion is, is that you don't even have to use this ordinance. If people want to be hybrid because of COVID or COVID concerns, you can use that as a medical reason. And in Georgia, you have unlimited medical reasons to be virtual. Per the meeting I had this morning. Per individual, right, right. So any other questions? Seeing none, I think we had a, have we moved to approve? No, I I need a motion, please.
I move to approve.
Second. Uh Sharon, that was Rob Price moving to approve and Catherine seconding. Um, any further discussions or questions? Hearing none, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion. Thank you. No, I was, oh, no, you can go.
I was waiting.
No, Sharon doesn't have to read it.
Yeah, she doesn't have to read it.
She doesn't have to read it because it's not a resolution or an ordinance change.
Uh, Mayor and Council, this is a cleanup amendment for the CARES two fund and for the new council members. At some point, I'd like to sit down with both of you and discuss how this was set up. Uh, but for those that don't know, the ARP final rules have come out and so in the next month or so, we will start talking about that. But in the meantime, I wanted to do some administrative housekeeping on the CARES money. And I'll go through them pretty quickly, but it's just pretty self-explanatory. We're clearing out the hazard pay to match exactly what was paid out. The amount for not-for-profit grants, just for the record, the city put out six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to eight different not-for-profits. Over the past year and a half. So I consider that a a a great deal there. In this particular instance, we're decreasing city supplies and services down to what will probably be about eighty thousand dollars remaining. And the contingency to four hundred thousand. We're. In the CARES two money, going to budget the Brook Run lighting at an estimated eight hundred thousand and we still do not have a good figure on that. But we are unsure if we can do that with ARP, so we're going to start the ball rolling with it. Here's what I wanted to kind of pocket that for now. The city supplies and services, we could decrease because almost everything we would do with that would be eligible under ARP. The things like vaccination events and stuff like that can still, so we, we don't need as much there. This is to get us through the next couple of months. Uh, to also give you just for the record, we straightened out one, we had a one small business grant that wasn't totaled up in the dollar figures earlier. So that's reconciled and the city gave out one point eight million dollars worth of grants to small businesses in Dunwoody over the past year and a half. So. When people ask, where did this money go? You can point to that and the not-for-profits as the biggest bang for the buck during the. Amount that we had for CARES. Uh, still leaving money in Al Fresco Grants and entrepreneurial support. Uh, the tourism reopening is there and then also in here is two hundred and twenty-five thousand. We've added a full-time staff member. To handle accounting. And then also in here is 225,000. We've added a full-time staff member to handle accounting that we're going to start doing with all this federal funding. Technically, since we're paying for it out of CARES II, I can treat it like general fund money instead of having to do certain things with payroll. So we're just cleaning it up. And that will be all for, I think it's two years worth of that. There's any questions, I'll take them at this time.
Tom?
Yeah, thanks, Jay. Just a quick question. I think putting the Brook Run Lights in here is a great idea because there's substantial savings. As we talked about when Brett presented this, going with the higher upfront cost over the long term. My, my question is this, based on the number you have in there, 800,000, does that mean we're going to move forward with both Phase Two and Phase Three?
It is a ballpark for that. In our discussions with Georgia Power, we unfortunately got a higher price when they came back to us. And we're like, that's not how this works. So we're having to go back and forth with them on straightening it out. So we just want to put something where we knew we could cover it.
But the idea would be do both phases at the same time?
Correct.
That's great.
The savings is tremendous over.
Absolutely. I agree with that. Thank you.
Joe?
And Jay, I love that we have all the transparency on our website, the Dunwoody Carezec website. So I'm assuming we're going to update these numbers on that publicly facing? Awesome. Thank you. Yeah. And then that's more of a comment than a question. I guess maybe back to Michael starting. The Alfredo Grants, we, we still have 124K open in there. So yeah, we need to kind of walk around and let our friends know that they can still apply for that if they want some space heaters and all those good things. But yeah, thank you, Jay.
John?
Jay, can you give us an update on the entrepreneur support? Tell us, we really haven't done anything there. Can you tell us where we are? Who can apply? How do we help?
Not there yet.
Do that.
I can tell you, we're, we're working with this Economic Advisory Committee and we're not there yet. So we had a meeting with our consultants, with members of the task force, and we are honing in on categories. And I was actually, I was in, visiting one of our corporate citizens and they have some unused space. And I asked if maybe we could have it for this. They did not say no. So we'll see. I'm not counting on anything, but it was just an opportunity. And so, but we are, I think we have a meeting at the end of the month. And so the 20th, yes, the 28th. So we're working towards coming up with a robust plan that makes sense. And, and then also, does it look differently for mom and pop type restaurants or businesses or small businesses versus technology company startups? So that's where we are.
Well, I'm happy to hear the ball is rolling as long as we're doing something. Because thank you.
Yeah, we're doing something.
As far as empty space, Carvana is wonderful news.
Yes. Big tax benefit there, too.
It's wonderful news.
Wonderful news.
Thank you.
So. Go ahead.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Stacy, second by Tom. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously, Sharon.
Thank you very much.
I guess I'm supposed to acknowledge that you're there, Chief. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, the item before you is the approval of a Criminal Justice Coordinating Council Grant Award. We were notified in December that we had received a $38,935 grant. This is in the category of use of force and de-escalation equipment for our department. It's reimbursable, so we pay it out. They provide it for us, the funds for us. And there's no match from the city. And this just authorizes the mayor to sign the appropriate documents. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Move to approve.
Wait, I have a question.
You can do it. Wait, we have a motion, so we can do it. Moved by John.
Second.
Second by Joe. Any further questions or discussion?
Um, where's this going to live and how does it work? Like, well, well, it's a simulator. So I'm assuming it's a piece of.
No, it, no, it's, it's not the simulator. We already have the simulator. It's equipment related to the simulator. Some additional handguns and different things that work with the simulator.
Got it. Okay.
Equipment with it. And it's over at the.
As over at the annex. And just out of curiosity, how often do our officers do this training? Because obviously, I mean, it's so important and a valuable part of.
Fairly often, probably at least once a month, they go while they're on shift, particularly sometimes on weekends and nights. It's a little bit easier after things slow down at, you know, three o'clock in the morning or something. And so they do that training.
All right. And do any of our surrounding jurisdictions have this as well or?
Sure.
Okay, they'll, okay. Thank you.
Seeing no other comment or question, I call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. It passes unanimously. Sharon, that was unanimous. And it was John made the motion and Joe seconded, in case you didn't hear. Thank you, Chief. And thank y'all for applying for it. Any public comments? Hello, sir. You could just state your name.
Mayor, City Council, my name is Darnell Vickers.
Is it on the microphone? Is it on?
It is.
Okay, there was better. That was better, sir.
I forwarded a letter to you all and I thank you for acknowledging. See that letter? I'm going to read some portions of that letter here tonight. Going to get straight to the point. The developers of the cottages of Dunwoody Peachland Limited Liability and the Miller Group LLC have deceived the Dunwoody City Council and the neighborhoods that surround the development of Robert's Drive. November 24th last year, mature trees that surround the development were removed. Since July 2020, the city council publicly tasked the developments group lead, Robert Miller, to work with surrounding neighborhoods that's Dunwoody Walk, Dunwoody Know and Fairfield to hear and address concerns before variances and rezoning requests would be voted upon. Bless.
Somebody, hold on one second, sir. Somebody unmute. Okay, try, go ahead. Sorry.
These concerns were documented for months before and after meetings, Zoom calls, zoning board and city council presentations. Our concerns were shared and documentation provided to the developers and in meetings with Richard McLeod, John Olson, members of the zoning commission, border management, city council and mayor. Dunwoody Walk's primary concern was preservation of the tree buffer, which was also among the concerns of Dunwoody Know and Fairfield. A unanimous petition to save the trees from Dunwoody Walk's homeowners, homeowners were shared by our serving president at the time, Judy Wiggs. She attended a public meeting with others from the surrounding neighborhood, neighborhoods where they share their concerns. The city ultimately approved the rezoning requests of Mr. Miller and Peachland. But they imposed 26 conditions on the developer that were to be met as a condition of approval of the rezoning request. I want to point your attention to condition 23. I think the meeting itself where this was introduced was October 26th, 2020. Condition 23 refers to the buffer agreements that were to be worked out between the surrounding neighborhoods. If there was any deviations from the known plan, Robert Miller, Miller Group or someone from Peachland was to confer with the surrounding neighborhoods. Thus, we were shocked to see the swift removal of the tree canopy and buffer. And this was all done on the day before Thanksgiving last year. We were even more surprised to learn and speaking with Robert Miller spoke to myself that there was no intention of preserving the trees.
Thank you very much, sir. We have, we have your letter. If you want to finish up, we'll give you a little bit of extra time if you have, if you want to conclude your thoughts.
Well, one thing, we have questions with the city on who approved. Mr. Miller pointed out that he revised his landscaping plan. We would like to know how that process worked by the city or the planning commission. We also want to let you all know that if his group, Miller Group or Peachland, ever come before city council again for approval of variances or development for the city, we would like to be invited. We don't want to speak in opposition. It might be something that benefits the city, but we, if there is opposition, we just want others to know what kind of person you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Eric, do you have any comments?
No further comments, Mayor. We do not need an executive session tonight.
Any council comments? John?
Madam Mayor, I believe there's a policy document that the city council reviews and goes over every couple of years, basically on how we run our meeting. If we could have that reviewed at a future council meeting, just to make sure that new council members actually know that that document exists and that the current ones are re-aware of it.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah. So, um, welcome. And of course, not the newbie anymore, but yet, haha. But it's all good. So think about it, in just two years, four new folks are up here now. And so still learning a lot every day I'm out here as well. And trying to make sure Lynn doesn't get burnt out and takes vacation all the time, right? I remember two years ago, right before the pandemic, we had a retreat and, and Craig Ellser was the facilitator. And he went around and asked us, eight years from now, write down what you want to say. Eight years from now. Now it's, now how many years is it now? It's six, right? So, right, we, 2020, speech and choir, obviously, things had a little hiccup here. But, you know, in the software business that I work in, there's a, the X-axis, I had to look this up, the horizontal, the Y. There's a, you can put competitors of you sell a product or something in a quadrant, ability to execute and completely completeness of vision. So you say, we've got great plans, we have great vision, but are we executing? Right? So I've always gone back to it's the execution phase, right? So we sat back in 2020, we had this, we reset and reconfirmed our vision and plans. And yeah, and then we had the pandemic hit. So all I'm saying is I'm looking forward to working with everybody. I'm looking forward to our retreat. I'm looking forward to focusing on, you know, the future and getting things done. Watch what we're going to do in 2022. So, thank you. And go dogs.
I just want to thank that our dummy police chief and the other chiefs of police who came here today to publicly announce their frustration with the Cap County school systems and the lack of movement on us allowing to play, play some speed camera detectors in, on our public streets to protect our schoolchildren. And I want to publicly say I'm extremely disappointed at Cap County Schools that it came to this. I was here today and I was proud, again, proud of our police chief and thankful that the other police chiefs arrived. And I hope they wake up and sign, sign the agreement.
Catherine? Tom?
I'll just second everything Stacy just said. Thank you, Chief. And the other police department, it's, it's just absolutely ridiculous. And I implore the Cap County School System to wake up and protect our kids. It's ridiculous that they're, they're been dragging their feet on this. But I appreciate the effort of our, our police chief and our police department in going the extra mile to try and get this through. And Catherine and Rob, welcome. Look forward to sitting next to you for next few years and working with you. Thank you very much.
And I'll ditto what Stacy and Tom said. And I appreciate Chief and the other chiefs working together and caution the media to fact-check any response to Cap Schools has. So far, the two things I've heard they said could not be, well, they, they are very inaccurate. So this system is free to the city. So any city unincorporated to Cap can pursue it. And it is not a cash grab. And it only looks at license plates. So with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Move, Stacy.
Second.
Second by Joe. Go dogs. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Eight. No, we bang it at the end. And IT can turn off. Thank you. Okay. And I forgot to. Give her the box.
Mayor, I need to. I'm going to be out of town three meetings this year.
Well, if they're the next month or two, you can virtually participate.
That works from February. That's good. And then one's work and then one's, so these are all planned before I go.
That's fine. And you can get through a year under state law.
Well, to, to, to go in virtual, right?
To go in virtual if you choose to participate.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Okay.